Of public interest to this, we wish to address this committee. If not, then we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have the review of the minutes and the review of the minutes of October 3, Planning Commission Study Session, since there were so few members there and it was absentee, if you don't mind, the Chair would like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as read, please.
One second, Ed.
Motion in a second, and of course, we'll have at least three of our staying from that. Thank you. Now, we have the review and possible approval of minutes of October 5, Planning Commission Meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes for the October 5, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Have an announcement of any committee report, please?
Mr. Martini? I think you're going to have to ask him.
Mr. Peterson?
I think you're going to have to ask.
John? Do you have a?
Armando, do you have any announcements or committee reports?
Committee reports.
We do not. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I apologize.
Any informational items? CNN will then go ahead and move on to this public hearing commission, public hearing item, PCN 170035.
Good evening, Chairman Peterson, members of the Sparks Planning Commission. I am Armando Ornelas, I'm the Assistant Community Services Director, and I am pinch hitting this evening for Karen Melby, who is off for a few days for the happy occasion of her daughter's wedding, so. PCN 170035 involves two requests for a site that is approximately 67.4 acres in size located at 500 Highland Ranch Parkway, so essentially, this is just southwest of the intersection of Pyramid Way and Highland Ranch Parkway, it's outlined in the blue, the cyan is, I guess, the color. And again, there are two parcels, a smaller one here and then the larger one. The two requests associated with this case are a request to amend the comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from open space on a portion of the site to commercial, and then the second request is to rezone the site from A40, which is agricultural, to C2, general commercial. In terms of reviewing those requests, the first one, again, is the comprehensive plan amendment. You'll see on the screen that a portion of the two parcels is, already has a commercial designation on it, I think it's approximately 14 acres, and then the rest has an open space designation, and what they're proposing or requesting is that the entirety of the site, the entirety of both parcels be changed to commercial. And then with regard to the rezoning request, the existing zoning, again, as I mentioned, is A40, and the requested zoning is C2, which is again, more intense of the two general commercial zoning districts that the city has. In terms of background for these requests, just over a year ago, it was actually September of 2016, the Planning Commission voted to forward a recommendation of denial to the Sparks City Council. The City Council did approve the annexation petition on October 24, 2017, a little less than a year ago, since it was annexed into the city. And then in March of this year, the City Council directed staff to negotiate and prepare a development agreement pursuant to NRS 278.0201 concerning the development of these parcels. The City Council directed staff to pursue that development agreement so that we might be able to consider and address the timing and phasing of development, along with the entitlements necessary to develop the properties. And, you know, the thought was that a development agreement would also allow us to look at the requirements for and the financing of public infrastructure, including the potential inclusion of this site in impact fee service area number one. So, just to, again, to revisit the actions that occurred last fall, you know, there was, there was some frustration, frankly, on the part of both the Planning Commission and the City Council, that, you know, with these requests, you know, you don't necessarily have a project and you can't condition the project, and so, in retrospect, you know, what staff has identified that maybe the route we should have gone from the very beginning was that we should have had a, done a development agreement per NRS 278, and that would have allowed to tie these things together, you know, the entitlements, the provision of infrastructure, and the timing, all of that. A development agreement was not reached, however, and I think you'll hear this evening that city staff and Mr. Garrett, who is here representing the applicant, hold different perspectives as to why that is the case. The lack of a development agreement, however, does not prevent the Planning Commission from hearing the land use amendment and rezoning request. In other words, we don't have to have a development agreement to consider these requests, but it leaves a hole in terms of being able to make some of the findings. So, you know, we're in a position, then, that as I go through the findings, I'll explain what the concerns were with regard to making the findings for each of those requests, and, you know, what I'll tell you at the front end here is that staff is recommending the Planning Commission deny both applications for those reasons. Okay, so, moving on to the comprehensive plan amendment, as I said earlier, property is designated on the Sparks land use map as a combination of open space and commercial, and the request is to take the entirety of it to commercial. There are four findings to consider for this request. The first is CP1, which is the proposed comprehensive plan amendment would be in conformance with the regional plan land use and intensity designation. In reviewing the comprehensive, or the regional plan, we identified three goals and policies that are relevant to this project. One of them is Goal 1.1 in the regional plan, which says that between 2007 and 2030, at least 99% of the region's population growth and 99% of the region's jobs growth will occur inside the TMSA. This policy in the regional plan can be satisfied because this, these properties are located within the City of Sparks portion of the TMSA. A second goal from the regional plan that's applicable here is that local governments will review and revise their master plans to include management strategies for areas with natural slopes greater than 15%, but less than 30%. So, there was some concern here that because a portion of the site is development constrained because it has slopes greater than 30%, or that, you know, we might not be able, or it wouldn't be appropriate, to designate the entirety of the site in, as, as commercial in terms of the land use designation. I think really what this goal in the regional plan calls for is for the local governments to include policies in our, in our master plan, in our comprehensive plan, that provide for protecting development constrained areas, and in fact, we have such policies in our, in our comprehensive plan, and as I'll note down the line, we also have codified those requirements and restrictions with regard to the development of constrained areas. In our zoning code, we have, you know, we have a hillside development provisions in our code, so. Goal 2.3, I think, is also satisfactorily addressed by this application because of the fact that we have those policies in our, in our comprehensive plan. There is an erroneous statement, I will acknowledge, in our, in our staff report on page five, which said that no slope analysis has been provided, I think that the applicant has called out the error there, and we agree that, you know, that, that's, that slope analysis was provided. What I will say, though, is that it was not a basis for recommending now, or that we couldn't make this finding CP1, so, in that sense, it's moot. The more problematic goal from the regional plan is Goal 3.5, which is what we generally refer to as the concurrency requirement. And so, regional, regionally, Goal 3.5 has been interpreted to mean that necessary public facilities and infrastructure must be in place, or that there must be a plan for and a funding mechanism to provide those, those facilities and services concurrent when new develop, and on the part of the City of Sparks, we have generally sought to provide for concurrency when entitlements such as land use and zoning approvals are considered and granted. So, the fiscal analysis submitted by the applicant does indicate an interest in developing the subject properties as commercial and/or multifamily uses, however, because the site was only recently annexed, no city infrastructure or services have been extended to serve potential commercial or multifamily uses at this location, and in particulars, from, you know, if you're going to put population there, the property is located outside of the six-minute response time standard that the city has adopted for fire and first response. So, ultimately, you know, what staff is suggesting to you is that it's difficult to make the finding of CP1 because there's not a basis for finding concurrency due to the lack of the, of a mechanism with financing to provide for, for facilities and services. Now, you know, the thought had been with the development agreement that we would get there and we would be looking probably at inclusion of the properties within IFSA number one. That could still happen, but it hasn't happened to date, so as we sit here today, you know, again, we can't say to you that there's a basis for making a concurrency finding. Finding CP2, the second of the four, says that the comprehensive plan amendment would implement the goals listed within the Sparks comprehensive plan as listed in the staff report. So, we've identified seven goals from our recently adopted comprehensive plan, a number of these, including Goal MG1 and Goal MG2, we feel, you know, this, this quest would advance. The third one, Policy MG5, which calls for, when reviewing master plan amendments for sites over five acres, calls for the city to evaluate or cause to be evaluated the impacts on existing and planned facilities and infrastructure, the impacts on existing and planned public services, the proposed land use in relationship to existing land uses, and the fiscal implications for public services as documented in the fiscal analysis, is more problematic, again, for the, some of the same reasons I just spoke to. The fiscal analysis does, was provided, it, you know, it's based on two different scenarios. One of the scenarios calls for 36 acres of general commercial uses, and it projects a net positive fiscal benefit to the city of 20, of just under $2.2 million through that 20-year period. A second scenario, which included a 200-unit apartment complex and approximately 110,000 square feet of self-storage facility, also projects a positive fiscal benefit to the city of approximately $911,000. So, you know, arguably, that aspect of that policy can be satisfactorily addressed. The one thing I would go on the record with here is that it assumes that all of the infrastructure inside the site would be private and privately maintained, and therefore, you know, where this property, the property owner down the line, or some future property owner down the line, to seek dedication of those, you'll say, the roads and the curb, gutter, sidewalk, et cetera, inside the site to the city, then we might be able to go from having a positive fiscal benefit to a negative. But as, as submitted, assuming private infrastructure inside the site, it shows a positive. I would say, though, that with regard to Policy MG5, again, the issue of the infrastructure without a mechanism for addressing that led staff to suggest to you that the second finding for the comprehensive plan amendment also can't be made. And again, then the last aspect of that, in terms of these policies, are the ones that have to do with development constrained areas and slopes, and we don't believe that that is an issue in this instance. So, finding CP3 is that the comprehensive plan amendment would be compatible with surrounding land uses. On page eight of your staff report, we have provided a table that reflects what the uses on, on the adjacent areas are. We don't feel that a commercial designation on the site would be incompatible with any of those uses, and so, we believe that the Planning Commission can make finding CP3, as well as finding CP4, which has to do with public notice being given and a public hearing held. The project was noticed in the Reno Gazette Journal, the Planning Commission and City Council meetings would function as the public hearings, and the required neighborhood meeting was conducted by the applicant on October 11th. So, to summarize, with regard to the four comprehensive plan findings, we feel that essentially, two of them are, can be made, and two of them can, and the two that can't be made, CP1 and CP2, really rest on the fact that we don't have a way for providing for concurrency at this juncture. So, if you'd like, Chairman Peterson, I can, I can stop here and you can ask questions about the comprehensive plan, or I can finish my, move on to this part of my presentation regarding the zoning request.
Yes, I would like that, and then we take the.
Okay. Okay, so the rezoning request, again, is for changing the current A40 zoning on the entirety of the site to C2, which is, again, as reflected on the, on the screen. And on a rezoning request, there are three findings to consider. Findings Z1 is that the project as submitted and conditioned is consistent with the City of Sparks comprehensive plan. As indicated in the, in the analysis on this finding, staff does not believe that the finding pertaining to the comprehensive plan can be made for the rezoning request until the site is, until we can address concurrency. And so, if concurrency can't be addressed, and if you, if you, if you not approve the comprehensive plan land use amendment request, then I would say to you that you rezoning the property to, to C2 would be inconsistent or incompatible with the, with the comprehensive plan, if you don't change the comprehensive plan. The second finding is that the project is consistent with surrounding existing land uses, again, for the reasons I cited earlier. We do believe that finding can be made, and that finding Z3 can be made regarding public notice and public hearing. So, to recap with regard to finding Z1, it really hinges on whether or not you make a decision to approve the comprehensive plan land use amendment. If you do not approve that amendment, then, you know, you really aren't in a position to rezone the property. So, that concludes my presentation, and I will stand for your questions.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How long has the policy regarding concurrency been in our master plan and within the regional plan?
For quite a number of years, Commissioner Carey, I think it probably goes back, certainly to the 2007 update of the regional plan and, and, you know, our update of the, of our comprehensive, or our master plan. I think more than likely, and maybe Mr. Rundle remembers, it probably goes back to the 2000 regional plan amendment.
Thank you.
Any further?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Armando. To bring forward a zoning change, is a, is a developer agreement necessary? Because we've brought in many letters here that withdrawing from a, from the development agreement, is that a necessary thing to move forward for zoning changes?
No, it's not, it's not a requirement to process a zoning, a rezoning request, you know, that's, that's, you'll see that in some of the correspondence, is that, you know, we, we said it wasn't necessary for that reason, it's, there's nothing to prevent you from considering the requests for a rezoning without a development agreement. Where that leaves us, though, is that because of the location of the site outside the area where we currently really have infrastructure, and, you know, frankly, have a fire station to, to, that can respond within six minutes, you know, we don't, we don't have a basis, basis for making that finding that, you know, infrastructure and services can, are available concurrent with the approval of the rezoning request. So, there are other mechanisms potentially for addressing that issue. The development agreement isn't the only way, it's just, you know, it was the way that, that we, the path that we started down, but we didn't, we didn't get there.
I have a, regarding the fire response of the six minutes, under commercial zoning, commercial buildings are required to have sprinklers, correct? So, do they still have to trigger that same six-minute response?
Well, it's a standard, in part, it's, you know, it's, it's for purposes of responding to a fire, but, you know, as you know, the majority of our calls are for some sort of medical or other, or other emergency response, and so, you know, in terms of our service provision, you know, eventually, a responder will get there. The further away it is, of course, you know, it potentially, less than ideal outcomes, you know, at the receiving end, but it also pulls, you know, our responders away from, you know, from being able to respond to other calls for longer periods of time.
Right. And then I have a follow-up, if it's okay. Regarding the IFSA, will that correct our concurrency issue if the applicant petitions to be included in the IFSA?
Well, it's a matter of perspective, and I think Mr. Martini may have something to add to what I'm, to the response I'm about to give you. The petition itself simply would, you know, be a starting point for initiating possible inclusion of the properties in the, in the IFSA, there's a whole process that has to be, that we have to go through, and while it's, it's, you know, certainly likely that, you know, the conclusion, conclusion will be inclusion, I didn't mean to rhyme, but there's, it's not certain, right? Because we have to, we have, there's a, there's a series of steps, as you may recall from having reviewed the CIP for the, for IFSA 1 last year, we have to review the land uses for all of the properties that are in IFSA number one, we have to look at the infrastructure, you know, estimate costs, allocate costs, and then at the end of the day, you know, the, the property owner has to, has to agree, because, you know, that will, that will encumber that property.
Right. Okay. Well, and I did ask Mr. Martini in the study session regarding the IFSA, you know, and I appreciate the answer and everything else, and then, so, timeframe if they petition, and things like that.
Okay, so, you know, as of 10:39 last night, the petition was received by the city. That initiates the process to get started, I've already requested a meeting with Mr. Gordon. There are a couple of other steps we need from the property owner that I'll go over in the, in the meeting. Should that be agreeable to both parties, then I will, or staff will begin all the steps Armando talked about, we have to review all the land use assumptions in the entire impact fee service area, as well as the proposed land uses inside, inside the property you guys are considering tonight. Then the city engineer will review where we are with the CIP. We do have some new information, as I said, in the study session regarding Reach 9 flood control, that may cause an update. Then we will, the next step after we finish the data collection is it goes to a third-party consultant who assembles the fees and reviews our work. Then we will ask you to meet as the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee for the impact fee service area, some of you that have been on it, just, we did it a year ago. You will then review the, the proposed land use assumptions, as well as the CIP, and from those two come the fees. You'll make a recommendation as the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee to the City Council. Then there are some public hearing steps, it has to be noticed for a time certain, I think it's two weeks, I can't, I just did it, you'd think I'd remember, in the paper. Then additionally, that after proper noticing, we go to council, and it's, it's the vote to encumber this property with the impact fee service area one fees will be to the discretion of the council. With regard to a petition, it gets the ball started, but I will, I will tell the Planning Commission, there is nothing for a petitioner, there's nothing that stops them from withdrawing the petition, the request, anywhere along that process. So, you know, I anticipate tonight there will be discussion, or potentially at least thought about, is the petition enough so that this Planning Commission is comfortable moving forward with potentially a recommendation of approval? If you do get there, between Ms. McCarronk and myself, we will be happy to identify any risks that may go with that along the path, and, and, you know, we can see where the discussion goes.
Okay. So, now, if the petitioner can pull out at any time, can the City of Sparks pull out at any time during the process?
So, I, well, that's getting us to risk right now, and if you're ready for that discussion, I'm, I'm happy, I can identify a couple of risks along the road. I can identify a couple of risks along the road, or if you'd wait till after the applicant's done.
Yeah. If I'd gotten ahead of myself, we could wait.
I'm happy to answer it anytime the commission fills, it's timely.
I have one question. Could you point out, I don't know if you can see it on this map, where the existing infrastructure, where the sewer is?
Yeah, so, infrastructure on the west side of Pyramid Highway is really challenged. There's just not very much as we sit here today. So, the only dedicated infrastructure in this area, west of Pyramid Highway, is Highland Ranch Parkway. There is one culvert crossing that takes floodwaters from the north side of Highland Ranch, adjacent to Pyramid, south, that then makes its way through what is currently now undeveloped area, and then actually goes into an N dot owned crossing culvert that takes it to then the east side of Pyramid, and that's how the water, for a portion of that, makes its way into impact fee service area one. The sewer, currently, the dedicated sewer that is clearly dedicated for public use to the city, stops at the intersection of Sparks Boulevard and Pyramid Highway. The Kylie North development, back when they were moving forward and brought in, I always get the handbooks mixed up, is it seven?
Five.
No, five. Five, that's the west side of Pyramid that was done several years ago during the advan, the, do you remember when Sparks Boulevard was widened?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we're going back like ten years ago, remember that mess? If my memory recalls correctly, the developer worked with the RTC to extend the sewer from the intersection to their property. However, it has not been dedicated by the Kylies to the city yet. So, at this time, that short section of sanitary sewer, I believe it's a couple of manholes and some eight-inch line, is not dedicated to us. We do not have users on that side yet, there is no sewer going into it, so there's not even a prescriptive claim at this point. So, there is sewer to the Kylie North property that is, for all intents and purposes, private at this time, that does connect to the public sewer system.
Further questions?
Not right now.
Thank you, Armando. And John, thank you.
You're welcome.
The applicant representative here, please.
Did you need the exhibits?
No, I have a little, I have a point with some exhibits.
Ian, will you help Mr. Gordon, please?
Thank you.
Sir, to inform you, you have 15 minutes.
Starting now, or when you get set up?
Starting after you give your name.
You can see the timer on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that.
Give it a second. It looks like it did, although...
There we go. It wasn't it. Does it just usually pop up there?
Yeah, it will, it's usually the first...
Garrett proof. Try a different one of these, maybe? Should they all work? They should.
So, it got a light or anything on there, just lighting up to tell you?
Oh, your device, there we go. Okay, so...
Just open the folder, view files.
You've got that covered.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for having me. For the record, my name is Garrett Gordon, I'm a local land use attorney from the law firm of Lewis, Roca, Roth, Gerber, Christie, today representing the applicant. I think it's important, this is the second time I've been before you, been working on this project for almost 18 months now, I just wanted to humanize that this is not Garrett Gordon's project, this is not my firm's project, I have no interest in this project. It's a guy by the name of David Bruce. He's from Lake Tahoe, he did a project in Douglas County, 155 acres, beautiful trails, open space subdivision, Douglas County, he's doing, has been on projects in Arizona. He owns this property, acquired it when it was in the sphere of influence, and had a 14-acre, I guess I'll call overlay, of master plan zoning designation in the sphere. He petitioned to have it annexed, it was eventually annexed, so now, we have a piece of property that already has 14 acres of commercial, that's a fact. What we're asking today is just, take that 14 acres and spread it across the whole property. We know that there was a slope analysis submitted, we know that there's a large portion of the property, it's not developable. If you've been out there and seen it, there's this big, beautiful hill, used to be some rock mining efforts, that's going to have to be cleaned up, that's going to have to be stabilized, that's not developable. You're going to have a nice development, I'd argue, that starts kind of along Pyramid there, and winds its way along Highland Ranch Parkway. I know we're not here to talk about the project, but I think it's important, there's a reason why there is that little curve in the original 14 acres, because that's where it's developable, and we're just asking to move that further along Highlands Ranch, for a couple of reasons. Why is the fiscal analysis? It pencils, this is going to help the city, but I'll get to that checklist in a second. So, 14 acres existing, just expanding it. And in our mind, and it's always awkward here being adverse to staff, and frankly, I didn't realize until the staff report came out that I was adverse to staff, but I am, and I'm here, and I think we can make the findings, and I think we have a good compromise that we have, I have come up with in the last 48, 72 hours, that I think works. So, we already are 14 acres asking to expand that. The zoning, there's law that says any action of a local government related to zoning has to conform to the master plan. We're already commercial. I would say we're not in conformity right now. You got Ag 40, and you got commercial. That's not in conformance, and I would argue, you know, with the lawyer hat on, that we need to get in the conformance, but from a planning standpoint, and I do have a urban planning undergrad, that Ag 40 and a master plan designation is not conformity. We got to conform the master plan commercial with the zoning, and we're asking here to do that with a commercial, a commercial land use, C2. There's certainly a lot of steps to go, I mean, if you heard the fiscal impact, you heard when I was here before you, if you want to do a multifamily project, that requires a use permit with conditions. So, we got to come back, most likely. There'll be a site plan, probably administrative site review plan, go through staff, building permits, right? And I'll get to my checklist in a minute. There's a lot of steps that we still have to go, where if there's any concerns of, we're going to withdraw a petition, I'll get to that in a second, or we're going to not live up to our word. I have said in every single hearing, I know a few commissioners are new, but in the annexation hearing, we will be in the IFSA number one. Annexation hearing before you, annexation hearing before city council, development agreement language I submitted, included in there, we promised to petition. But you hear in a little, in a moment, we've done more than that now, we're not just promising, we have petitioned, and I'll cover that in a minute. So, as far as the zoning, we're just conforming it with the master plan. We already have a commercial designation, this brings it in conformance. There was a question, I appreciate the question, Commissioner, about utilities. I think I have a little, respectfully disagree that there's a utility problem, I mean, it's sitting at our front door. If you look at this, you have, here's the property, here's Highlands Ranch, AT&amp;T lines to connect to, AT&amp;T lines connect to, already a water tank. Our engineer has confirmed that phase one of our project, we can use this water tank. We have, for phase two and three, I know we're talking about the project, but utilities came up, we have to build a water tank on top of this hill for the rest of it, but we have a water tank that's a stone's throw away from the project. As you continue to meander down Highlands Ranch Parkway, you have a water line right at our front door to connect to. Approximate location of overhead power, we have power. So, I think there was a presumption, or I guess an implication, that this is kind of out in the boonies, and there's a lot to do to get, to get, to get utilities there. We're at Sparks Boulevard and Pyramid, I mean, I would even argue this is infill development. I mean, we're right there, and as I work down this, as I work down this utility plan, water line, Pyramid, sewer, sanitary sewer stub, right here. Location of cellular tower, right here, location of overhead power. So, I asked our engineer, and by no means I'm not going to play an engineer tonight, but, you know, with this assertion that, what are we even trying to develop this thing for? You're not even close to utilities. We would argue, and not even me, but my client's comfortable in taking the risk to develop this property, knowing he's going to have to oversight some pipes, knowing he's going to have to do water lines, do all kinds of utilities, the fact that it's on the front door, we're comfortable with moving forward. So, here's kind of where we've been over, gosh, last time I was for you was about a year ago. So, the client came to me and said, I'm in the sphere, what does that mean? And I said, that means you can get annexed into the city, and so, we submitted the application, of course, came before you, went to city council, that was approved a year ago, October 16. Next step was to master plan and rezone. We were told, well, you can't file that until you do a lot of stuff. We had, so we waited for the sewer study to get completed, which it was completed, and when I was before you guys last time, there was a question of, is it going to work for this property or not, should we delay it? That was kind of the basis for your denial of the annexation, let's wait. Sewer study came back and was fine. So, I believe when I argued on the record that there was capacity and it was going to be fine, it was fine. Slope analysis, we were asked not to submit the master plan rezoning till we did the slope analysis. You saw, and I appreciate Mr. Rundle's commenting on it, but I don't believe it's moot, I mean, if it's not part of the findings, why is it put in the staff report? Kind of make us look, frankly, kind of made us look bad that we didn't have our act together. I mean, we submitted a slope analysis requested by staff, and got a letter back, and I hope you all received my letter and had a chance to read it, saying, thanks for the slope analysis, and we agree. So, now, we have consensus between the city and developer of our developable area, we agree there's going to be a lot of open space, which would be great for any residents to walk up that hill and have a nice trails. So, we have a slope analysis that's complete. Then, of course, we couldn't submit until fiscal, and I appreciated staff's discussion about, well, it's all private roads, and we have some concerns here. We submitted the fiscal analysis in June, and I haven't heard one question about, well, can you please have your economist respond to the following questions? Can you please have your economist verify her assumptions? I haven't heard one thing since the staff report came out in June that the fiscal analysis had any flaws. So, I think before you tonight is a fiscal analysis that says it's positive, and that satisfies the finding. Then, the development agreement, kind of the elephant in the room. We were asked, before you submit a master plan and rezoning application, we want you to do development agreement. We said, okay, we're going to go to city council and ask them to direct us. Okay. Talked to the city attorney's office, he sent me a form, I redlined it, attached it to the application. My client, Mr. Bruce, came up with 1,900 bucks to pay for development agreement, we submitted it, and it went in. And part of that language was, we promised, let me get it right, then, we promised, we agreed to petition the city to include the property in IFSA 1. So, we agreed the petition, it was going to be in writing. It wasn't that we had the petition, we were even agreeing the petition. So, that went back and forth, and then, it was determined that development agreement wasn't going to be necessary to move forward with these applications. And to your distinction, my understanding, if you get a letter that says development agreement isn't required, to me, that would mean your application is not in jeopardy of being recommended for denial without a development agreement. I mean, the basis for this application, for this denial, is concurrency, IFSA number one. And why? Because we didn't do a development agreement. I would have gladly had a development agreement before you tonight, but I actually went a step farther, in that the development agreement said, we promised to petition. I read the staff report in 78 hours, I got approval from my client, we have a petition in, petition is in, I'm meeting with Mr. Martini on Monday to move the process forward. So, the development agreement, I just want to be clear, would have said, we agree to petition, and that would have been satisfactory, that language came from staff. We went a step further and actually petitioned, and I am happy to amend that letter on the record tonight and say, we will not pull a building permit if we withdraw that petition. There is no game of, there's no games here, I promise you. Our clients spend a lot of time and money on this process of where we are today. We petitioned, it's not being withdrawn, we heard at the study session, flood, fire, excuse me, flood, and fire, and sewer, and parks, in fact, could all be eventually satisfied as far as the nexus. And if you look at my letter, here's the boundary, Kylie North above us is already in, on our side of the property, next to all these utilities, they're already in. So, there's no distinction in my mind between them and us, we're just, we're contiguous right below them. So, we're petition, we're not withdrawing, you can put anything in writing that I will not withdraw, and we want to come be in and pay, and part of our pro formas include paying those assessments that would be required for multifamily or commercial. So, development agreement, 1,900 bucks was paid, it was withdrawn, and it was not required, and, again, no indication whatsoever. I also included in my letter emails to staff, and by the way, I have a lot of respect for your staff, they work very, very hard, they do very good things for your community, but my normal process is, no matter what jurisdiction I'm working in, am I missing anything? You saw the emails I submitted, what can I, what can I miss? There was never a fix your fiscal, there was never a get that petition in, there was ever a, you know what, we need that development agreement, we're going to recommend denial. There was never any indication of denial. So, as we move past development agreement, we, so after the negotiations, we determined one wasn't needed, we got the letter that says one wasn't needed, one would assume that means you're not going to recommend the denial if you don't include one, we submitted our applications in June. I think that's important, June, where are we are today, we're October. Again, no indication that development agreement, or IFSA, or fiscal, or slope, or any of that was going to be a problem, but we're here to fix, not to point fingers, we're here to fix the potential problem. So, what is it? IFSA, concurrency. I saw Commissioner Carey nodding about concurrency, and how long it's been there. It's been there a long time, you know, my urban planning classes, concurrency was pounded into our head. And let me say, the staff report and the finding says that necessary public facilities and services to support new development are or will be available and adequate at the time the impacts of the new development occur. So, we have utilities at our front door, we believe that we will, in fact, have adequate public facilities and services to service us, and it's at the developer cost, remember, we're not asking the city for anything, it's at our cost. But the big one was fire, which we can all agree with. I agree with Commissioner Manuel's question that with sprinklers, kind of moot, but IFSA, we have petitioned, the language in the staff report said, if the site were part of IFSA 1, its development would contribute toward the cost of a fire station, additional sanitary sewer, drainage, park facilities, and other improvements. So, we have petitioned, we're not withdrawing, I'll put that in writing. We understand that we have a lot of steps left, and that those steps...
Two minutes left, sir.
How many?
Two minutes.
Thank you. That those steps could be held up if we don't get it in this petition? And what's the proof or the basis for me saying that? Well, my annexation was almost held up, because we had to wait for the sewer study to be completed, right? So, that was something that was asked for, and that it was almost held up. Our ability to file a master plan and zoning application was held up, because we had to do a slope analysis and fiscal. Now, we have a petition. So, I have no doubt that the city and staff could hold us up with either a special use permit for multifamily, or site plans, or building permits, without IFSA. We're not going to withdraw it, and I will put it in writing, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, that we are going to be in IFSA. And the question is, why don't you just wait? Why don't you just table this application and wait? Because I'm told it's another nine-plus months, nine to 12 months, is what I was told. We started this on October 16th. I argued before you last time that let us move forward, the sewer is going to work out. We moved forward, and the sewer worked out. Let us move forward, our petition is in, there's no, you've not heard one thing of why the IFSA won't accept this piece of property. It's going to accept it. I mean, the city council is going to say, wait, you, as a property owner, are self-imposing assessments on your property, to help out the greater good. I mean, we're asking to be assessed, bring it on, bring the numbers on, let's do it. There's a lot of steps left, and we know it, but we don't want to wait another nine to 12 months, given, staff report came out, it seemed like this petition was important, we did it 72 hours later, and we'll continue to be a good, not only good consultant, but Mr. Bruce will be a good constituent, a good property owner, a good developer, and will continue to do what he's asked of in this great community. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm here for any questions.
Yeah, thank you for your time. Any questions from commissioners?
Good question. If everything moves forward, when do you plan to have the land developed? Because we've got about 157 acres of undeveloped land that's already been approved, and so I'm curious to know when you would move forward with your development. I'm curious to know when you would move forward with your development.
Commissioner, thank you, that's a great question, and I saw that in the staff report. Let me just say, answer it two ways, if you don't mind. One, on the legal side, the number of acres in the community compared to what's being asked for, i- is in my mind, I don't want to say irrelevant because that sounds dismissive, but it just, we mentioned the staff report, and it's just not important, because some of those properties may have options on them, some of those properties may be tied up in Kylie Ranch, some of those properties might be in bankruptcy, some of those properties it might be in foreclosure. We don't know, but we do know we have a property owner, and I've heard, I've heard people say this on the record before, developer, it's his, it's his right to fail, it's his right to risk this, and he believes and has had conversations with folks that this is a great multifamily site. I walked it, the views are incredible, and right there at Sparks and Pyramid, a great commercial location. So I can understand and respect that question because it was in the staff report, but I think without doing an analysis of why those properties haven't gone or not, and we're ready to go now, I think it would be, would be important as far as making the findings here.
Well, and my original question is, so you're planning on moving forward immediately? I mean, pending any approvals?
So markets, sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner, yeah.
No, I just want to make sure you understood the question.
I'm sorry, great question. So everything is market-driven, right? I mean, this is why this developer, you saw in his bio, has been pushing, because the multifamily market is hot right now, right? Commercial, and commercial and some uses are also hot depending on what you're doing. So he doesn't want to wait nine or 12 months. He has folks, I would argue, knocking on his doors, I've been fielding calls in order to do a project here. I can't guarantee he's going to have a shovel in the ground by December, but I can guarantee you, he spent a lot of time and money since over a year ago in order to get this entitled and get it ready to go.
Ms. Gordon, I have a question regarding the sewer line. You had stated that there is a sewer line close to this property. Is this the same sewer line that Mr. Martini is discussing that Kylie is in ownership of and has not been dedicated to the city of Sparks?
I'll defer to Mr. Martini, our engineer prepared this, but our engineer was, was confident that there was available sewer to stub into.
Martini, do we know if that sewer line that-
I believe, I'm not sure where Mr. Gordon pointed to, I don't see any sewer lines on his map. Garrett, could you pull it back up?
I have right here from-
I couldn't see it real well.
Yeah, it's awful, but it says-
Can you zoom in or anything?
I'll circle it right here, it says, right here, approximate location of sanitary sewer stub, and you come down here and you stub right into Pyramid. So that was our engineer's analysis.
Well, if that leader is pointing to the manhole that's at the intersection of Pyramid and Sparks Boulevard, then that would be a location they could tie to. I honestly can't tell from this map.
Okay, but is, is that the one you were discussing that Kylie has not dedicated to the city of Sparks?
No, the, the one that I was discussing goes from potentially where that manhole, where that points to. No, he's, no, I can see it now in color. He, yes, he's talking about the private line that Kylie is in ownership of.
Okay, so it would be something that the Kylies would have to dedicate to the city of Sparks in order for his project to plug into, correct?
It could go a couple of ways. So the Kylies could dedicate it, you know, ask for dedication, or between the private parties, they could work to an agreement that they, that would allow Mr. Gordon's client's development to tie to that line.
Okay, all right. So that sewer line does not have to be necessarily dedicated to the city of Sparks to be used?
So-
Because if you said they can make a private agreement-
For the purposes of concurrency.
Okay.
As we sit here today.
Yes.
I do think it's important.
Okay.
For the purposes of development, private parties can certainly work agreements out.
Okay.
And then approach the city with an agreement. So as I view it right now, does the property have a sewer stub to it? I can't say yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, may I, may I respond, if you don't mind, as well?
Sure, yes.
Let me say that this, that discussion, in my opinion, as far as concurrency, is in the weeds, because what if we do a mini storage? The sewer required for that's going to be different than a hotel, it's going to be different than multifamily, it's going to be different than Taco Bell, it's going to be different than a Maverick. So the fact that it's at our front door, I think, is the important part. The fact that we, when we have a project, if there is no sewer tap-in, we're never going to get a building permit. I mean, I think holding the concurrency standard of having agreements in place for sewer, when you don't know what you're doing yet, this is just a zone change, it's just changing the colors on the map. It says in the project, we have a long ways to go, and we have utilities out our front door, and we have a lot of work to do, as with any development project, but not, certainly not with a master plan and zone change, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions for the applicants. Reb, Garrett, thank you for submitting your letter. I had a question concerning the slope analysis that you submitted. It was good information. It appeared to me that you were kind of looking at creating, in the future, potentially two different parcels. There was kind of like, one that was like, would be the open space, and then there was the one along the road that would kind of be your, your, your commercial parcel. I was just kind of curious how big the commercial parcel would be, and how big the open space would be.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. So I'm just going to refer to my letter, Exhibit A, where our engineer, Jason Gillis from Tech, breaks out the acreage and says, the total site acreage is 67.4 acres, believes that the proposed development disturbed area, 35 and change, almost 36, and as you turn the page, proposed open space 31. So in looking at it, open space, 31 acres, developable area, disturbed area, we'd like to get the 36, but we know that comes with a use permit, so it'd be up to this body whether or not you allowed that much disturbance, but staff, you know, thanks for the slope analysis and said, yeah, you have to go get a use permit. So to your question, yeah, so around 30-plus acres of open space, 35-ish, depending on what we get with the use permit for developable area. I've seen a number of different parcel map ideas. One, just, you're right, one is, one is open space and one's developable. But I've also seen like 20 parcels where each commercial and multifamily pad would be its own parcel. So if you had multiple builders come in, it's easy to sell different parcels.
Yeah.
So I think that parcel discussion is being had and will come, and again, that's a very good point. I didn't put that on here, parcel map. We can't develop without a parcel map, because we have two parcels. So I would imagine if we played coy and pulled our petition, we'd never see the light of day of a parcel map. So it's a very good point that there was another level of approval needed for a parcel map, and even a use permit to get to that parcel map, that would allow us time to concurrently move forward with a petition.
So follow-up question, so 36 acres of, of commercial future development area, why are you proposing the whole site then to be with the commercial land use designation? If we can look at your, you know, slope analysis, and we can kind of agree that the 31, your engineer says that the 31 acres is going to be open, I think with our staff, we had the discussion in the staff report about how with our, you know, our policies about constrained development areas and slopes, that, you know, those wouldn't be developed. I guess kind of what I'm, what I'm getting at is, you know, why not just go for the 36 acres of commercial as opposed to the whole 67?
So it's a great question. So because we don't know where that parcel line boundary will be yet, because if you recall, our slope analysis is asking to disturb more than what's allowed in code, which requires a use permit, so we would envision coming with a use permit, saying, we want to draw the line here. Now with a use permit, you can condition, so I imagine you would potentially condition to say, great, here's your line, and, you know, this is designated open. So we couldn't build there anyway, right? I mean, it would be allowed for, but if you want to take the extra step, which, you know, I've seen before and could appreciate, either designate it not buildable, or require us in the special use permit conditions to go do a parcel map to break this up, and then rezone this back to open space. I think you had the flexibility, after we figured out what that line was, to condition us to do a parcel map that was satisfactory to you.
Can you further question?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Thanks, Mr. Gordon, for coming tonight. I do have a question. So, so March 13th, 2017, directed to, city council directed staff to negotiate, prepare a development agreement with you, with your, with you and your client. So then July 12th, got a letter from Karen Melby with City of Sparks saying, hey, your Title 20 administration deemed your submittal for Highlands Ranch development incomplete. So it wasn't complete, and it says, hey, if you're wanting to continue, we're wanting to still negotiate this development agreement with you. And then it says, a development agreement, which you've highlighted, is not required, which, if you don't want to develop the land, in my opinion, it is not required. You don't need to do a development agreement. But I think by getting city council to say, hey, we want to negotiate with you, and then now we're three, what, June, July, four months later now, still not complete, if you want to, again, you don't have to have a development agreement for a zone change. Sure helps, you know, it's kind of getting things set in stone and moving forward with the development agreement, et cetera. So now we're, now we're in October, now you're coming forth for a zone change, now you've submitted for the I S F A, which is great. Would you be willing, you said you didn't want to table this item, but again, I think it's putting a little bit of the cart before the horse, without having the development agreement, without having the petition in, in firm negotiation. I know your words are saying, hey, we're not going to pull it. You have my word, and I, no doubt, that there's nothing that says, if you sell this property in a month, that the new buyer has to live by what you, what you say here tonight. So what my concerns is, is similar to last year when you're here before, the sewer wasn't done, development agreement has been asked to be done, says you don't need it, it's not required, because, I mean, it's not a requirement, but it sure would help to develop this property. Why now, as for a zone change, instead of without a development agreement, without having the I S F A bringing you down, I think that would be, you know, more concurrent to saying, hey, now let's backfill with the proper zoning. Just, I just want to ask you, why zone change tonight, instead of working through the concurrency of a development agreement?
Thank you for the question. And, you know, let me say this. I was in every single meeting. The first meeting after the annexation meeting, I sat down with staff, and they said, you're not moving forward without a development agreement. And I said, okay. They said, we're going to go to city council and ask for development agreement. And I said, okay. Came back, city council said, do a development agreement. I got a, I got a draft from Doug Thornley, city attorney. I looked at it, reviewed it, and redlined it. It was pretty big, he acknowledged in his email to me, this might not all be applicable, it's kind of a Kylie scope, but, you know, let's take a look at it. So I redlined that document and said, how do I submit an application for a development agreement? There's not really a box to check, and I just have a redlined document. And I was told, we will check, we will create a box and check development agreement, you saw in my letter, that's what was done. Client cut a check for 1,900 bucks, and I submitted a redlined development agreement to the city. Never got a redline back. I talked to the city, talked to staff, I talked to city attorney's office, and it was discussed that a development agreement was not necessary for this size and scope of project. It was. And the letter came back that said, development agreement is not required. Now, I know from a legal perspective, the development agreement is not required to process a master plan and zone change. But if there was any uncertainty, I mean, I mean, don't you believe that if the basis for denying the application was no development agreement, that that would have been communicated in that letter, or in one of my emails to staff of saying, are we missing anything? That we're going to deny your application because you don't have a development agreement? The first time I, I was shocked that that was in the staff report. We had already agreed that we didn't have to do one. The I F S A would be petitioned later. I, I would have kept the development agreement in the books, I would have had one before you, I had redlined one and was ready to go. We'd even paid the fee to do one. So it was, I want to just be clear on the record, it's 100% not accurate that we refuse to do a development agreement. We, and to prove that to you, I filed the petition at the earliest convenience after getting approval from my client to go in, which was the basis really for the development agreement. So it puts me in a really awkward point, because now there's, because now I'm pretty much saying that the staff report is not accurate, and it is not accurate to the T with regards to us refusing to do a development agreement. And my, and my knowledge, and I was told, that, ever told, that your application was going to be denied because you didn't have one. I would have done one. Why would you spend all this time and money and effort to come before you for a year and a half without that? So I hope that answers your question. I mean, we're-
I don't think it was refused, I just, I think that the letter said that it was not required. So I don't think it was refused.
But not required to get a, to get denied? I mean, why would I not, why would I send that letter if I thought the application was going to be denied, and I got to sit here before you again, trying to make a case for why go against staff? That's a hard case, it's an uphill battle. I did it at the annexation, it wasn't fun. It's not fun tonight. It's why I petitioned the I F S A. And what I just thought of is, why don't I record the petition for the I F S A, so if the property will ever change his hands, that's a recorded document? And that no building permit will be issued if it's, if it's withdrawn? I mean, there's ways here, I'm not trying to be difficult, there's ways here to get through this, but not to make us wait a year. And now that I'm sitting here, to be honest, sitting here with staff, you know, they're all ticked off at me, and how, I mean, is the I F S A is going to move quickly? I mean, no. I mean, and we're going to be here. I mean, we've been here for a long time. So I'm asking you, on behalf of my client, we've petitioned, we're not withdrawing, we'll memorialize it however you want, but don't put us in the penalty box for another year because we've done everything we've been asked to do on this list.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to bring it back here to the, first of all, this is a public hearing, so if there anybody out there, we'd like to address this commission on this matter. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for a discussion and possible motion. May I tell you at this time here, we have to, this was a single presentation, we have to vote on the amendment to the comprehensive plan first, and then another vote on the zoning, rezoning. Am I not right there?
That is correct, our chairman hears.
So if we'll have a discussion on all of this, and then we can take these votes in the manner given.
Mr. Chairman, I'll volunteer to kick us off here.
Okay.
Lot of information tonight, appreciate staff's information, appreciate the information from the applicant. For me, one of the things, I think, one of the great success stories with Sparks, maybe I'm a little biased because I'm a Sparks planning commissioner, but I think our impact service area number one program has really done our city a great service. We have, you know, millions and millions of dollars of public infrastructure and services out in the Spanish Springs Valley that have been completed and built to serve all that new development that haven't cost the taxpayers of Sparks a lot of, any money. You know, Sparks is very unique in that we've done that, we're, we're the only city, in my understanding, in the, in the state that has exercised that program within N R S 278. I know from looking back at this commission's hearing on the annexation last year, and watching the city council meeting, there was a lot of concern about the ability to provide- the City Council meeting, there was a lot of concern about the ability to provide public services on this property. And with public services, you know, we talked about stormwater, we talked about fire, we talked about sewer, we talked about parks. I'm not seeing a plan in place, or an agreement in place today, that we can make the concurrency finding that, to make CP1 and CP2. I think, I think, in terms of compatibility, the proposed commercial use is, is acceptable. I agree with staff's recommendation. You know, this has been master planned for, for commercial for a long time. Multifamily, our commercial use would be good, but I just don't see a way that we can provide services on this, on this property in the future, without development agreement or inclusion in the I F S A, number one, to move forward. So, I, I can't make finding CP1 or CP2 on the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Hope that kickstarts the discussion.
Any else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, along with a couple of you, sat here when we did the annexation, and I voted for it, even though we had a study and things like that. As Mr. Gordon has said, and things like that, when we have market conditions, we can start, we can start hamstringing developers, to where they, they unfortunately get stuck in our hamster wheel. And with, and I guess staff will have to verify with Mr. Gordon, I, you know, that they have facilities to plug into. I guess my question is, is, does that I F S A have to take nine months?
So, Commissioner Vanderwell, I, we just did it a year and some months ago. So the, the data is fairly fresh. Mr. Critten didn't join us a couple of years ago. One of his first tasks was to assemble the land use assumptions. He's been through it once, so this one won't take as long. The, the update to the CIP, I don't think will be as long that it took last year. Took us a good nine months. The, the consultant we used was new, they've been through it, they've got all the data, all the tables, you know, it's, it's a matter of, of changing the data and looking to see, you know, how it plays out. So I, I, we will be faster than last time. What causes me concerns to sit here and tell you, we can get it done in three months, get it done in six months, are the public hearings. Additionally, I think the Planning Commission needs to realize as well, this will be the first addition to Impact Fee Service Area One since, in my recollection, since about 2005, when we brought the far northeast corner of the city in, which is now Upper Highlands. That was the last piece we added to what was the original N S S O I infrastructure plan. As part of those public hearings, it, it, it could be possible that current owners inside the Impact Fee Service Area may, for some reason, take exception to adding another property in, I can't predict that. That could cause additional study and additional public hearings. So, the mechanics of crunching all the numbers, getting it done, I think will happen faster. It is the public hearing process, I cannot predict for you tonight.
Okay, all right. It's just also, it's my concern, as the Planning Commission, when we sat and did the annexation, that it ultimately was denied from this body, and then City Council overturned it. So I guess, that's, that's one of my concerns also. And the thing is, is, and like I said during the annexation, we have City Council people that are saying that Sparks is open for business. And the thing is, is if this property owner, you know, it took them a year, 18 months to get this far, and then if we have to wait another nine months, so then they're a little over two and a half years, and I, and none of us can predict, of course, market conditions, but then we have a property owner spending money, which I realize is their risk, because it is their risk, but then, then we sit with entitled properties, again, that we can't do anything with. So, that's just a concern of mine.
Commissioner Vanderwell, you had brought up earlier the, the part about risk. Do you want to have that discussion?
Yes, let's please have the risk.
So, if, if this property is rezoned, or you recommend the master plan amendment and the rezone up to City Council, let's assume it gets approved. At that point, it will not be an Impact Fee Service Area One, we will be going through the motions to get it in. Mr. Gordon's been very clear tonight, they have no intention of withdrawing, he's offered to put it in writing for us. That's great. My concern, I believe Commissioner Fewans brought it up, please be aware that upon rezoning, all of the mechanisms available to a developer to get started are, are turned off. Parcel mapping, development plans, Garrett mentioned building permits, depending on what they want to do, commercial would be by right, it would go to administrative review. If it was multifamily, it would, it would come back for a CUP. Commissioner Fewans mentioned a risk that is real. They could parcel, at that point, when we review a parcel map, among other things, do, do the parcels match the zoning? There's not a lot of technical data with, with a parcel map. We could choose to do a tentative parcel map, it is in state law, we haven't typically used it in the City of Sparks, but we could. It could be parceled, it could be sold, we could be dealing with another owner. We, we have a lot of questions about infrastructure with this property. The, the first person in the door, I can assure you all, and Garrett has said it tonight, we will work out the engineering when they get started. I don't, I can't tell you who we'll be working it out with, but we could be setting up a situation where the first person in is going to have to answer all the questions that we are hoping to accomplish in a development agreement. So as we sit here today, and, and I understand where Mr. Gordon is, they don't know their development plans. For instance, when we modeled it in the sewer model, if it does come in heavy on, on the multifamily side, there are some problems downstream that the developer will have to fix. Just for clarity, we, we know that that chance is there. Those will all have to become conditions of some sort on that developer. So, I, I am, I am confident that, that what Mr. Gordon says is true, they won't withdraw this. At some point, I can, I can see this pending something in a public hearing, I can't predict, that it will be included, and they will be paying their fair share to utilize the millions of dollars of infrastructure that Mr. Carey talked about that exists inside I F S A One. There is just risk in between. And it is the comfort level of this Planning Commission and, and the City Council to determine where that risk lies and, and how we proceed.
Okay, so, and Mr. Gordon had also put that, acknowledging that, yes, the developer, then it's turned on for parcel mapping and things like that.
Building permits.
And building permits. But then again, in order to do any of those things, he's going to have to have access to utilities, correct? Okay, so the thing is, is, so technically, those things can't happen if he can't prove access to utilities, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, it's kind of a conundrum there. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, if I may be as bold as, I'll make a motion. Appreciate the discussion. I'll throw it out there, I'll make a motion to deny the request to amend the comprehensive plan associated with PCN 17-0035, based on finding CP1 through CP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Have a motion, have a second? If the motion dies, lack of a second? Anyone else care for try?
Mr. Chair, I would like to, a little more discussion, since it is, that one's died. I, I, I believe that this, these motions need to be tabled, not to a date certain, but I would recommend a motion that, that we could table it to, till we get a I F, a development agreement in place, or, or some kind of I F S A Number One agreement that is in process and in moving and going, and I think that is the proper way to do that, that we can get a development agreement, or we can get them in the I F S A, table these zone changes until that is done and moving forward. I would feel more comfortable with that, as a table. I just don't know the motion to write, I guess I would just say, instead of deny, to just table it. And then I would kind of defer to the attorney in the room for us to say-
I would think it takes a motion, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
And can I put at the end, just based on the development agreement and/or an I F S A Number One agreement? Is there a better way to write that, Mr. Martin?
If you will, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Fewans, I, a couple of things. I think if you choose to table it, I, I would prefer, since we cannot require a development agreement, which is part of the reason we're in this conundrum tonight, that that not be included in your motion. That puts staff in an awkward place. And then with specificity towards inclusion in I F S A One, perhaps you should consider completion of I F S A One, or upon recommendation of this body serving as a capital improvements committee, upon your positive recommendation forward, that it could come off the table, maybe something like that would be a, a, a better recommendation to, to the commission. Some things about tabling, when you, when you table something, we have to have your reasons for what, what it'll take to come off the table.
Could I have some follow-up discussion with that?
Yep.
Because I, I realize we can't do the development agreement. My concern is, is the length of time that it takes on I F S A. That is my, that is my main concern with this. And I realize, yes, it opens up development, that they can start doing things, but you know what? They can start being proactive on their other things while they are waiting for the inclusion into the I F S A. And then, you know, that's, then that's their cost of doing business if the I F S A ends up not working out. But the thing is, is my concern is, is we keep delaying development. And I just, I, I'm concerned with the hamstringing of the development. That's just what I'm concerned with.
I, Commissioner, I, I, yes, hamstringing development is not what we're here for, that's not what we want to do. But it has to be, I think, reasonable development. You know, we're looking at, you know, March got direction from City Council to get development agreement going. July, hey, your development agreement's not complete, work on it. You know, actually, you know, to bring forth, we heard from Armando, we didn't have to have. To, to bring forth what's in front of us tonight, a development agreement doesn't have to be there. But you were directed by City Council to work on a development agreement to get this, get this done. It, it's been withdrawn, I know that it was paid for, but they did formally withdraw it. I just, I, I have an issue with that, and if we, I appreciate the applicant promising his thing, and I believe it, I don't know, I think he wills, but I'm very concerned about if it sells to, sells in a month, the new, the new develop, the new owner, I mean, we're not talking about a developer here.
Right.
He may be a developer or something, but it was, to bring it back to the annexation, because that's been brought, that was another developer then. And same owner, different developer. Maybe the pause, and I'm, I don't want to bring too many assumptions, but maybe that developer pulled, but that, that person's not here anymore. So I think, I think tabling it is the proper thing to do, in my opinion, to give it until we get the I F S A Number One. It's been petitioned, I know it, there'll be some time, but, you know, March asked for a development agreement, July, you know, now that's, you know, months later, now we're in October. I think there's been some miscommunication from staff with the applicant, it seems like. I think that could probably be worked out to help it go smoother, but there's been, yes, time. Is it all the applicant's fault? I doubt it. Is it all the staff's fault? I don't think so. But there has been delays, but I think tabling it till we get them in the I F S A Number One, to lead it to, back to where the taxpayers aren't completely on the hook, I think is the proper, proper move currently.
I agree, and I don't like to hamstring the development along either, but I agree that possibly table is the best avenue we go, but we also must take a condition in the motion for that table, that there must be something meant on that motion table. I'm not right.
I'm sorry, say that again.
But if, if a motion comes forward to table it, we must give a reason in that motion.
Yes, and conditions on the tabling that must be satisfied, and it can be brought back at that time.
So if you want to-
Hold on, I want some further discussion. Well, and then the thing is, is, and then we can't put a time, and see, the problem is, is, we can't have, put a timeline, or can we? Can we put a timeline on this? Can we put, you know, see, that's the problem. We can't put a timeline on these things to say, okay, hey, you know, after so many months, you know, we, or can we? Can we put milestones?
Well, why can't we?
I know, that's what I'm asking.
That, that would be more of a continuance than a tabling. I don't see any reason why the commission could not ask for periodic reports from staff on this matter, as far as progress is concerned, but perhaps not as a, perhaps not as an action item, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no.
Maybe continuance would be a better motion, you know?
A continuance would bring it back as an action item at a particular time.
I would be supportive of that. I just have a hard time going with the complete rejection. I, I really do not want to have this go back to the council, and we are not doing our jobs and going forward with some development that they're ready to move forward on.
Mr. Chair? If, if it helps the commission, Monday morning, Mr. Gordon and I will get I F S A One update started. We will, as a staff, do all we can to get it back to you as quickly as we can. If you are considering tabling, that point to which it comes to the C A, or Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, could be a point where you want it off the table. Once you see the results of the analysis, our findings that we meet all the nexus criteria to bring it in, I, I agree with Mr. Gordon, we got, we got a great case just north of it. Kylie North, to the north, is in I F S A One. That may, may be a trigger point to pull it off the table, if that's what you're considering. I, I don't know if that helps or not.
Can, I, I mean, can we put milestones in there? I mean, the problem is, is you can't, you can't give us timeframes, that's my concern is, and I realize things are not time certain, it's just-
Well, I'm ready to make a motion. Mr. Chair, if you want.
If there are no further discussion, I'll certainly entertain a motion.
I move to table the request to amend the comprehensive plan associated with PCN 17-0035, based on finding CP1 and CP2, until such time as additional facts supporting concurrency can be presented.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
No.
No.
Ayes have it. Do we have to have the majority?
It's a tie. Right, unless we want to do a voice vote.
We'll have to.
I think it was 3-3.
Okay, it's poll them, I said aye.
Commissioner Fewans, aye.
Commissioner Carey, aye.
Commissioner Peterson, aye.
Commissioner Vanderwell, nay.
Commissioner Brock, nay.
Commissioner Reed, nay.
If we had that one vacancy, not be vacant right now.
It doesn't matter, we have to have the majority in hand. Well, all righty, so we're back here, square one. That is not a- Let us not get out of here with a halfway decent motion. Maybe continuance is the best way to go. Would you, or like to discuss that?
I, I certainly agree with the vice chair's concerns about, you know, kind of leading the applicant on and having this drag on. I think they've been more than patient with, with the city, and we certainly do want to be, you know, open for business. The issue I have with the continuance is that it's kind of more specific than, you know, a tabling was. I think we needed more time to negotiate with the applicant and our staff and, you know, hammer out some sort of solution to get to concurrency. With a continuance, the thing that I believe is that it's kind of more specific. I don't know if it would allow that much time to allow that. I could be wrong, that's just kind of the thing that I have in my head.
Mr. Martini, could you just talk to us again about I F S A, the timeframe typically that's installed, and when you feel that you could be comfortable bringing us back, back to this body?
Well, as I mentioned before, we just recently did it. All of the parts and pieces are in place. It's a matter of updating the data, getting it to our consultant, having it crunched. The first public hearing that will come out of that analysis, as we move along in the approval process, is, is this body, serving as the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. That could happen as, you know, I can see staff taking, if, if we dedicate in to it solely, and, and put on a, put on a big push, probably about three, four weeks to, to go through all those spreadsheets and all the G I S data. While he's doing that, the city engineer can concurrently be doing the capital improvements portion, the costing of the facilities that are left to be built. I cannot predict the consultant time. Last time the consultant had it for about six months, but they were recreating everything from the past. That's all recreated now. It should go more quickly. I would say that's a month or two. So we're three months before, at a minimum, before we're in front of you as the C I A C.
Can we do a continuance for three months?
How would that be different than a table?
Yeah, it's not any different.
The, the motion that I brought forward said that supporting concurrency can't be presented, so that could be, you know, according to Mr. Martini, that could be two months if the support, if they bring it back forward as it, as an item that says, hey, by the way, this is where we're at on this. We can untable it at that time.
Mr. Chair, okay, so if we do that, does that mean that this application sits in limbo in planning and doesn't go upwards to City Council?
The application has been processed by planning. It is here tonight before you with the recommendation of denial. If you table it, it will not go to City Council.
What if we denied it?
Well.
So if I may, just one comment, one, and certainly Ms. McCrake may chime in and correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, the difference between a continuance and a tabling is, when you continue, it's to a date certain, so you would say, this item is continued to the planning commission meeting scheduled for such and such a date. So basically, you're continuing the public hearing to that particular date. With a continuance, with a, with a tabling, you know, there would be a condition for untabling it, and so it would, it would be untabled by the planning commission when that, when the planning commission determined that it was, that that condition had been satisfied. So there's no, you know, there's no date certain on that, on that tabling. So that's the distinction between continuance and, and typically, when we're talking about continuance, it's, you know, to the next meeting or, you know, next month's meeting, something along those lines, where you can foresee that, you know, in relatively short period of time, you're gonna, you're gonna be, you know, you know, opening it back up and concluding the matter ideally. That's not to say, I suppose, that you couldn't have a three-month continuance. It's just, you know, it's a little harder to predict where things are going to stand in, on that particular day.
Exactly right.
Here, try, state your motion again, let me try it again.
Well, just for, for the applicant, would, would, would this be a, well, I guess, for staff, for the applicant, being this timeframe, would this be, be brought up to the forefront in moving this along?
If, if you're speaking to the focus that the update of I F S A one with the petition before us tonight, it will be in the forefront.
Okay. Okay. Can I try the same motion again?
I would.
Mr. Chair, okay, thank you. I moved to forward the table the request to amend the comprehensive plan associated with P C N seventeen dash zero zero three five, based on finding C P one and C P two, until such time as additional facts supporting concurrency can be presented.
I'll make the second, Mr. Chair.
Have motion second, on a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
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 It was fun.
I'm not gonna let you go home until you get this thing cleared up. Let's do our job that really has us out there. Concerns are both ways. We're here, and it is a very, very touchy situation, I know it, but there can be a compromise here somewhere.
Chairman Peterson, members of the commission, I thought maybe I'd offer a comment that maybe would address in particular maybe Commissioner Vanderwell's concerns, and maybe those of some of the other planning commissioners, in terms of this, this holding things up. So, you know, in, in a sense, some of the, all of the steps that Mr. Gordon was talking about having to go through before this, this property would be developable. In fact, you know, all of those steps, and in particular, you know, how infrastructure's going to be provided to the area, including potentially, you know, through inclusion in I F S A number one, will in half, will in fact have to be taken more than likely in order for development to come out of the ground anyway. So, a delay of the, of the master plan amendment change, or the comprehensive plan land use designation change, and the rezoning, if you do that today, that doesn't mean that the, you know, a project comes out of the ground necessarily any, any quicker. And associated with approving those requests without having this concurrency issue addressed are the, some of the risks that Mr. Martini spoke to. So, you know, I, I think, from that perspective, you know, that's why we would, you know, we had entertained this idea of a development agreement, because the idea with a development agreement would have been that all of these steps would have sort of marched forward, you know, more together, and would have arrived at the finish line together. And, you know, you would have had, you would have had the basis for making concurrency at the time when you would in fact be approving your comprehensive plan and rezoning request. So, if, I, I don't know if that, you know, maybe addresses your concerns about delaying the applicant, but at the end of the day, I'm not sure that, you know, a denial, if the, if the applicant is intent indeed on developing this property and wants to take, you know, do the land planning, do the infrastructure planning, and go through all that process, that you don't, that, that constitutes any delay if, provided they continue despite a denial or a tabling of the, of the motions.
Mr. Chair, I, I mean, the thing is, is with doing a master plan amendment, like has been discussed, all we're doing is changing colors on a map. It's not doing anything else.
Well, to that statement, change your color, I would respectfully disagree with, with that. A lot of times, colors on a map is, is very big, especially on sale of properties and different things. You know, we've, we've had a lot of petitions that came in front of us that have wanted to move zoning changes because of easier access to sell the property and different things. I'm not saying that's what the case is here, but colors on a map definitely do matter when it comes to a lot of things. And resale is one of those. What you could develop on the land is one of those. I think colors on a map is, is very, very important for the planning of this, of the
I would personally support a continuance, not a table. I don't know about.
Well, a continuance will just freeze it to a time certain.
Well, there's an answer here somewhere.
What would be a question for the commissioner? What would be the advantages over, of a continuance over a tabling, in your opinion?
My personal opinion would be that it would give us a set time that we could make a, have it put in front of us, and it wouldn't just be sitting out there. I mean, it may come sooner, but I, it would give me some assurances that we would see it in the near future.
Thank you for the clarification.
With a continuance, then it doesn't go before the city council, does it?
Correct. I, I believe, Mr. Chairman, they would only see it if we approved it or denied it, and look at our recommendation.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if, if the planning commission tonight is going to consider a continuance to a date certain, I hear the need to, to move quickly. I'm, I'm assuming at this point, you're not going to continue it to January or anything.
Right, right.
I, I would appreciate if, if the planning commission could perhaps describe what they would like to see as far as further discussions, negotiations between the applicant and, and your staff, and what you would like to hear when, when the date certain hits, a report back on. Mr. Gordon brought up a lot of, of offers tonight. If there was anything in, in his testimony that would help you make this decision, that you would like staff and, and the applicant to work out, we'd be happy to do that, and then come back after the continuance with, with a report of how we did. Or any of the offers he made, if, if they're acceptable to the attorney's office in writing, if that provides a level of comfort, that this project will move forward in a way that, that you are comfortable that we, you can make the concurrency finding, perhaps that is something for your consideration. I would ask you to give some specific direction to, to staff, to then work out with the applicant for when the date certain hits, and we're back here doing it again.
Right, right.
And something's different.
Chair, Mr. Martini, can we do, or legal, can we do, or both? Can we do the continuance for a date certain for a development agreement?
No. So let's, let's discuss development agreements. Development agreements ultimately are approved by the city council.
They do, they do come here, though, first.
You would see it, but the, the development agreement's not a development agreement till the council approves it.
Right.
Can we do a continuance for the completion of the I S F A?
Well, our issue is, is the timeframe that it takes, that, and we're going to be in next year.
And that would be a tabling, because.
Okay.
No, a date certain would be.
If a motion comes out for continuance, as granted, that means for both these items on this.
Okay.
The rezoning also.
Well, presumably, you know, I think, without changing the master plan land use designation on, on the entirety of the site, then, you know, you wouldn't be able to consider that rezoning request and, and make the determination that the property as rezoned, if you will, would be in conformance with the master plan or comprehensive plan land use designation.
If the amendment to the comprehensive plan is continued, then there's no need to vote on the.
No, I think I would, I would, I would look to a legal counsel, but I would suggest that you need to continue that item as well.
As well. But we still will make a motion on both. Anybody very talented on creating a continuous motion?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I mean, what are we continuing it for? That's the thing.
Right.
I mean, we're either, you know.
Well, that's what you, the discussion was about.
Right.
It doesn't seem like that's feasible.
What's the record for longest stalemate in the history of the Sparks Planning Commission?
Well, I don't know, but it couldn't come at a better time for me, I'll tell you.
To my recollection, about six and a half hours.
Oh, wow, all right.
I think somebody, Scott, maybe you're talented at writing a condition, a continuance.
Mr. Martini, what would a continuous date look like, that you'd think there would be some actionable items that have changed?
Depending on, thank you, Commissioner, depending on what you're continuing this item to find out later, for staff to come back and report on, without knowing that, I, I'm having a hard time. If you, if, we've got, we've got the petition for I F S A one. Commissioner Vanderwell is concerned about the, the time that will take. I completely understand that. Mr. Gordon offered to put some things in writing. If that helps you move this along one way or another, we could, you know, it's on the record tonight, we could, we could work on what that is in writing, and if, if it, you know, helps you find towards concurrency, again, to the risk I spoke, you will basically be saying, you feel that, given the petition to join I F S A one, and some other assurances from the developer's representative, that you can disagree with staff's findings due to a change. At the time we wrote the staff report, we didn't have the petition in. It is in now. That perhaps could be a way to give it some more time for us to talk and bring something back to you that, that gets you to the point where the stalemate can be broken one way or another. Perhaps what we bring back doesn't help, perhaps it does.
Can we call Mr. Gordon up to find out what he's willing to negotiate?
The chair can call anybody. Hello again.
Hello, thank you.
Now my head, it hurts.
So you can, so you can help us all get to just an agreement of some sort. What would you like, I mean, I realize we, I know what you would like to see, but you're not gonna, it's not like Burger King, we're not always gonna get what we want, but can you, if we continue this to have you guys work on the petition of the I F S A to get it to a point where staff can recommend approval, that there is a concurrency, is that something you're agreeable with, or suggestions?
Yeah, thank you for the question, for the record, Garrett Gordon. Appreciate everyone's dialogue tonight and thoughtful analysis, I really do. Yeah, I, I think you've hit the nail on the head, is, you know, we just don't want to be stuck for nine to 12 months with not doing anything. To Mr. Martini's point, I did offer some things on the record that maybe would give you assurance that the petition wouldn't be withdrawn, that if we sold the property, that, that those assurances would run with the land. I could work with legal in the next, I mean, two weeks to come up with something in writing to give you. to give you assurance that it's not going to be withdrawn, and it runs with the property as far as the I F S A petition, I guess is one option. A second option is, I heard, I thought I heard Mr. Martini say, in three, four weeks, and maybe I'm misquoting it, but three, four weeks, you might have an indication of if the nexus can be made for the four items. If that's a turning point of not having a final petition, but that we've, sorry, we've made the nexus for those items, then maybe that takes two planning commission meetings from now, so I don't know, 30 days, but I would just be hesitant to not come back before you in the next 30 days with what's going on. I mean, it's tough for us. I mean, talk about the stalemate, I mean, and I appreciate, appreciate it, but I don't want to get stuck here waiting for updates from staff as well. So I guess you could also craft a motion if, with the concern, the recommendation to City Council of, I mean, maybe this isn't going to be realistic, but a recommendation of approval with the following conditions. Number one.
You can't condition.
No, we can't.
Oh, with the recommendation, okay. I'm not standing ready. Let me take that back then, okay. I thought you could make comment on the recommendation, more of a comment on the recommendation of what it comes up with with the minutes. But that said, Commissioner VanderWaal, let's come back in two weeks, come up with some assurances in writing of what's in, what, where we are with the petition process, maybe even come up with a timeline, but, but I would just say, I will put in writing that we will not withdraw the petition and that no building permit will be pulled if we're not in the I F S A. That gives staff comfort that we're not going to withdraw and go pull a building permit, and that lets us move forward, and it runs with the land if we can put it in a recordable form, either on the county court recorders or something here on, in the record of, let's, let's get this thing moving forward. So I'm really well at my sleeves with your legal counsel and with your staff to come back in two weeks with some written assurance that we're moving forward with the I F S A process.
Mr. Martini, now we need to know your timeframe.
I think, I think a two-week continuance for Mr. Gordon and I and staff to sit down, and I think we've heard your concerns, you've heard ours, you've heard the applicant's. I think two weeks to do our best to work things out. Mr. Gordon's proposition tonight of working through some terms that could be placed on the property in the form of deed restriction have some merit that we should certainly explore, and if you give us a couple of weeks, we'll come back, report on, on that. Hopefully, hopefully, we've worked something out, we're ready to record, and maybe that will get this commission and staff to a place where, you know, we, you can get to a decision. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Any further questions, why would we aim forward at this applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the second chance. Mr. Chair, can we have a five-minute recess, please?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Is there anything you would like to add to this?
So the discussion that we had had to do with the date to which to continue the item. If we continue it two weeks to the November 2nd meeting, the reality is we're going to be writing staff report next week. We'd have to have, if it's a deed restriction that we're pursuing, we'd have to have a deed restriction that's amenable to both parties, you know, next week so that we could then prepare staff report. So the suggestion would be that if you're going to continue it, that you, for this purpose, that you continue it to the November 16th meeting, and I think if you need to ask Mr. Garrett, I believe he's amenable to that, so.
Thank you. With all this information, is still further discussion, would somebody like to compose a great continuous motion?
I'll make a stab at it.
All right. You can do it.
I move to continue P C N one seven dash zero zero three five until the November 16th Sparks Planning Commission meeting so that all parties, I'm going to need help here, so that all parties may come to a timeline and an agreement on the I S F A? Or do I need more or less?
You know, Commissioner VanderWaal, at this point, I think you can just simply ask for a continuance to the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
How's that?
So I move, I move for a continuance of P C N one seven dash zero zero three five until the November 16th Sparks Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Good job.
All right. We now will have to take a motion on the rezoning.
I move, so, I move to continue, oh, wow, okay. I move to continue the zoning. Is that what I said?
Mr. Chair, go right ahead. Pardon me. You need to open the public hearing on the zoning item.
Oh, this is awesome.
Yes.
Thank you. Public hearing on this? But it was all under one presentation? Still do?
Yes.
All right. Anybody out there? Seeing none, I'll close the, and back to the commission for a discussion of possible motion.
So I move to continue P C N one seven dash zero zero three five, the zoning request until the November 16th Sparks Planning Commission meeting.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for fighting this through. I appreciate it, and you did a very good job. Go on to general business now. No general business, we'll go on to public comment. This is public comment for anybody on the agenda items or, done, we'll close that. Comment from the commissioners? I would like to say this, thank you for putting this together. It was a battle, and we, there were both very, very good points on both sides, and I, I'm proud of every one of you. Thank you. And any other comments from the commissioners?
I just wanted to thank staff for the registration to the A P A conference earlier this month. It was great to see fellow commissioners down there. Thank you for that opportunity, and look forward to be, participating in that, in that organization moving forward. And go Wolfpack.
Further comments? If not, I'm happy to adjourn us.